All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's now 6:01 PM. And the July 7th, 2025, Bella Beach City Council meeting will come to order. Tonight's invocation is presented by Councilmember Frank Banker, but I'm going to ask that we do a quick moment of silence for our good friend John Haney, who passed away a couple weeks ago. Dear God and our heavenly Father, let us pray that this council will make wise and godly decisions which are always in the best interest of our, this community and your people. Let us pray that your will protect our police and first responders and the people of Bella Beach. Let us pray that you will protect and restore man's portion of your most beautiful masterpiece on this island and protect us from any future storm toward this house. And let us pray that all your people find peace with one another, set aside your differences, and promote and glorify your name. In Jesus' name, your son, I pray.
Amen.
Amen. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Present.
Councilmember Jody Shirley? Councilmember Anders Wellings?
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Here.
City manager Kyle Reefer?
Yes.
City attorney Tom Trask?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy. Our first item on the agenda is approved above the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the motion? Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second? Second, by Todd Harper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now, we're up to citizen comments. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. We can be called on. Each speaker will be recognized once and limited to a three-minute presentation. Please direct all questions and comments to the council. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up. Give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Prince Will, 905 Harvard Drive. You probably know me well now. Couple of weeks ago, I attended your workshop, and I found out that you are going to discuss or you're going to vote on the bid for Knight Street Trump. I went home, and I just couldn't believe it. What's the bid going to do? It's not going to advance the subject at all. It is not complicated.
Mr. Will, I'm going to have to ask you to withhold your comment until we get to that subject because we are living on it tonight, and that's where this, uh, this order needs to go. Okay? If you don't mind, please just withhold your comments until we actually get to it because you'll get another opportunity to speak, and we'll move forward.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on any topic not already on the agenda? All right, says comments are now closed. We have a presentation from the Penous County Sheriff's Office, Monthly Law Enforcement Report.
Good evening, Council Sergeant Bullock, Penous County Sheriff's Office. And tonight, I'm going to present the May of 2025 Monthly Analysis Report. It's a good report. There's only one incident of a lawsuit that occurred, and that incident is related to a jackhammer theft that occurred the month prior. So they followed up on this case, added an additional charge in that case. It's probably been a dealing stolen property or a false verification ownership charge. So that relates that prior month. All right, and there's 12 people that are arrested in the city of Bella Beach every month of May. And when I look at these arrests that are on this list here, a lot of them are traffic-related arrests. And what that shows that our deputies are going out there and trying to catch bad guys, not necessarily just responding to the box or responding to calls for service. They're out there trying to catch and make the community safer by doing so. And for example, I noticed that there's 12 people that are arrested, but there's 20 total charges. The possession of controlled substance charge, that person was arrested on the traffic stop, but they're also arrested for DWSR at the same time. So that's why there's a discrepancy there between the total number of people that are arrested and then the charges. Be 20. All right, when it comes to the deputy activity, there's 598 events that occurred in the city of Bella Beach, and 723 units responded. So some units went to, had a backup going to the call with them or assisting them. And I did notice that there's an increase in direct patrols this month for May. And that, we've been working pretty hard and diligent on a issue with trap on Gulf Boulevard and 22nd Avenue. There's a complaint about speeding that occurred there that we've been spending hours on. We haven't seen anything really come to fruition, any excess of speed going on. But the deputy's been working out there and working on that pretty hard, trying to find if that's going to be a proper rate or not. But the backdoor activities could be the traffic stops or direct controls and house checks. And then on our last page, we had one crash that occurred in the city, a minor crash. Actually, it wasn't a crash at all. I'll have to do some more research on this. I believe there's a report of a crash, and the deputies finally got out there, there wasn't a crash at all. So it's interesting how this kind of popped up on the report from the date that I have. It appeared to be one of those, you know, your iPhone alerts you have a crash that occurred, and dispatch deputies are called 911 on their behalf. And when deputies got up there, there's nothing. So it's one of those fall prevention things that iPhone has or the smartphone has that alerts the 911 of a crash. And then finally, there's 197 citations and warnings issued in the city for the month of May. So just another testament to the deputies are going out there and doing traffic and for responding to the box as they're receiving calls for service.
Any questions or comments?
Just a brief comment. These are regular items that appear on the report, but I'm just curious for some examples. We have 11 incidents of transport prisoner, and just what are some examples of assistance citizens?
So the transport prisoner, I talked about this, I think, about two months ago. And a lot of times, those are generated when we have maybe a homeless person that needs to go to shelter. But in addition to that, those are also folks that were arrested. Maybe they were arrested for the DWSR. They come back here to the, we bring them back here to city hall, then we have a transport van or a transport call generated, so then they can take them to the jail. So that frees up our deputies to stay in the city and prevent them from having to spend time going, hooking a person into jail.
Thank you.
Assistance citizens, those could be anything from, hey, there's patentry or something relatively minor that doesn't, doesn't require a police report to be made.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Do we have a whole new cell in this building? A lot of them?
No.
Do we have questions or comments? Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
All right, next up is David Trump. Is he here tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay, well, giving the code enforcement report is Deputy Reefer.
Thank you, man. So yes, Officer Trump, he will be out this week and returning next week. He's on a short vacation. But he did code enforcement all the way up until Thursday last week. And you'll see on our graph, which is page 3799 of the electronic document, or the code report, it shows kind of what he's been doing this past month. We're still spending a lot of time on the ground cover, more so, I would say, some of the, we're getting the growing season, so he's had to toss this week through the city and catch some lots that are getting over the seven inches. And while he's gone this week, I have Aaron in Community Services who's also, will be checking on the grass length because it's growing so fast. But yeah, one thing I want to say is this upcoming month is we're planning on citing the edged shrubs that we're seeing throughout the city. We've been focusing on the grass, but now the field time at some landscape and some of the shrubs that are, they're clearly dead, get removed and just to get it out of, you know, site. So that's kind of where we're at. We're going to send out a little notification or email blast to give the residents a heads up of what we're doing, and we'll see more of that coming next month's code enforcement. That really is all I have. We will continue to, you know, use our new program, export the report. One little hiccup is if we have the back date of entry, we can put the date, the note was entered, but when I run the report, it puts it in the entry order regardless of what the back date is. So it might be something that needs fixing, but I just wanted to mention that.
Based on the extent of this report, I'd say he earned the vacation. He's been doing a lot of work, very busy, and this is, this is good. This is what we were expecting, so great job. And we'll see him, or we'll tell him, thank you very much for doing such a great job. Any questions for the city manager concerning this report?
So if I, if I did some, or if I had some other potential violations, would you consider how do I submit them? Can you just email me?
Just email, sure. Okay.
For call or any?
Okay. Just one question. I'm glad one council member just showed up because she might need help with this.
Sorry.
No, no. Getting complaints, and you went right out, Deputy Trump went right out with one of the pools. A lot of these people have abandoned their houses, or they're not in their houses. They've actually, some of them cleaned their pools out. I'm not saying everyone has, but they had to stop running. So now it's a green mosquito, rat, snake. Some of these neighbors don't like the snakes coming into their yards. So what do we really do here?
So we send a violation letter immediately for pools. I typically do five days, but I learned that we can actually go pool. Five days is something that was the minimum. So I actually did one recently for thirty pool, just because it's pretty nasty. And the mosquitoes are the worst part.
Yeah, and rather than rats and everything else.
Right.
Now, when you overflow, how much you pump them out, it's really big.
And we did six pool cases this past month, because we're still getting them.
I appreciate it. At what point does this become a biohazard, and you can sign them all you want?
Thank you.
But at what point can something be done about it?
That's it.
But now, this year, we have more mosquitoes than I've ever seen.
Yep.
And the entire time I've lived in Bella Beach, things copied the pools. I can't say that absurdly, but if you know a pool that is dirty, it will get on and get cleaned up.
Wouldn't we send a violation letter? And, you know, it usually doesn't even go to a hearing. They're either coming, either getting a pump back, operating, pumping it out, or treating the pool's problem.
So most people are more aggressive if it's a violation.
Any other questions for City Manager Reefer on the code enforcement report? All right. Next up is a presentation from the Penous Suncoast Fire and Rescue District. Welcome, Chief Grimes. You have the floor.
Thank you. Chief Grimes from Penous Suncoast Fire Rescue. For the month of June, we had 15 medical calls. Two of them, I've tried to sort out as serious. So one was a trauma alert, which means the person has to go to a trauma center, which is the closest one to someone in their day frame. Sometimes we actually fly those patients out. And then one full cardiac arrest, that's when they're on the stretch of duty. So 15 total, two in the serious category. We had two fire lines, and our response time on average was seven minutes to the scene. That's not getting to the patient, that's just to the scene, depending on how far the patient is from where we parked. But seven minutes to get to where we're pointing. So that's, that's something we're working on with our northern property we bought at Church of the Isles. Because our average call is four minutes and thirty seconds, but we really like to do it less than that. There's some great videos on fires, that you light a fire in a garbage can, and in seven minutes, the smoke's on fire and burning. So if you can get there before that, you can really stop the damage. It's taking, obviously, with the heart of death. You can get there within the first four minutes, you're in good shape. So that's what we're shooting for. And I also pulled some numbers on the fourth. I just thought it would be interesting. We had two medical calls and one fire line, so we didn't have a lot of Fourth of July activity. That, in contrast to last year, was six calls, which was two motor vehicle collisions, two medical, and two fire. But over the last five years, the highest year was, we had 13 calls. That was when the weather was good and it's a lot of people out and doing a bunch of things. So we had nine medical calls and four fire calls, Fourth of July weekend, on a busy Fourth of July weekend. Our work group is highly motivated, and we just actually onboarded this month two new hires. So we put them through about, they're already obviously trained, but we put them through our armed orientation program, so a few weeks of training. They're in a week of medical this week with this county, and then they'll be on shift soon. That's about it.
Any questions or comments for Chief Grimes?
No? Okay, nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, now we're going back to a city attorney. Oh, we're going to the city attorney. Tom, how are you doing?
Doing great, thank you.
Okay, do you have a report for us?
I do. I wanted to follow up on our discussion that we had at the June 23 meeting relative to artificial turf. I want to bring your attention that there has been a change in the law with regard to artificial turf. The state statute refers to the synthetic turf. The House Bill 683 was adopted and took effect as of July 1st of this year. It specifically provides some direction to municipalities relative to enforcement of regulations relating to synthetic turf. The new statute is 125.572, and it provides that the Department of Environmental Protection is obligated to adopt minimum standards for installation of synthetic turf. Once that is done, it's, the city is going to be prohibited from adopting or enforcing any ordinance that reinforces a regulation that does not comply with the standards that have been set forth by the Department of Environmental Protection. So we'll be having to keep a close watch on the Department of Environmental Protection as to when they adopt those minimum standards. I'm not sure whether that'd be done in 30 days or so, but we'll keep an eye on that. But I wanted to bring your attention because of the discussion that took place at the last meeting. So off the key code of speed, when we get those standards in place, we'll have to take a look at our code. We may revise our code, but we will not be enforcing the code if it is in any way not in compliance with the Department of Environmental Protection standards.
I'm assuming you will provide some guidance for altering our ordinance to reflect changes?
Absolutely. I did take a look at the ordinance after the meeting. There are a couple of places in your code that talk about turf, and I became familiarized myself with that statute, so that as we go forward, I'll be able to jump right on that as soon as we get the standard set. Those sections aren't happening, 4-69 in your code, also 9-6.
And is there somewhere we can follow along when the standard is being worked on?
So at this point, I'm not really sure where that's going to be located. I will, since this just became law, I will follow up with that, but more than likely, it's going to be a regulation through the Department of Environmental Protection, or something, a website associated with that on that department.
All right, and just so everyone knows, I think the, the big question was about right away and the setback, is that correct?
It was the front setback, including the right away. From what I understand is when the, it was the planning and zoning board that met and reviewed the code in 2021, but when it was discussed about artificial turf, that it was intended that there was, that it was supposed to be allowed. Maybe the language guns got screwed and they codified it, but the idea was they were supposed to allow it in front. Setback on the lot, but the right away would never be something that would be permitted. But if someone was to put it in the right way, I'm concerned that we should get some kind of a sign off saying that if we do work, that we do not pay the cost, you know, have to replace it.
I have a question when we do work with the right way, it's so much drive, why don't we do? Who?
We put it back, but that's a lot different than artificial turf. We got the sub-service and the exact install, certified installer and all that, you know?
Well, I was just saying, if we're not going to do it for one service, we shouldn't do it for any services that ever.
That's what most places do.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to say, oh, we're going to cut a drag, some replacement install, but we're not going to if it's artificial turf, then we need to have a standard. Either we do it or we don't, you know?
That's like the county does.
Correct. If you, if a water main breaks, it's on you.
Right.
All right.
And then what do we do for people that want to install it now?
So right now, you can allow them to move forward in compliance with the city code, but as soon as the standards come down and we, and they are not in compliance with the standards provided by the Environmental Protection, those now will basically be legal, non-conforming on the lawn, yard, whatever you want to call it, right away. It doesn't mean they'll have to come out, it just means that if a legal one was put in, it follows in our code. But, you know, moving forward, we need to apply what the standard set by the Department of Environmental Protection.
So did we determine that our current code, because I found some conundrums, did we determine that it was legal to put it in the patents, and some people have a current one?
So when we looked at it on the 23rd, I gave you my opinion relative to that provision It says under section 3 of paragraph 3, locations allowed, artificial turf slash synthetic turf shall be allowed in front, rear, and side doors, not to exceed 50% of the total lot area. This area is defined as the total parcel area defined as a side or rear yard, defines the area of primary structure. Of the front, rear, and side doors, artificial turf, grass shall not be allowed in the front yard areas or any area visible from the public right away, regardless of whether it's in the rear of the side door, unless it's placed between paper blocks and similar items in a manner where the area where the artificial turf does not exceed four inches in width, provided synthetic turf area does not exceed 50% of the total area of paper blocks. So in other words, you can have four-inch-wide turf, artificial turf in between paper blocks.
My understanding is that we have quite a few applications for installations in progress right now where it was solid, it wasn't restricted to four-inch strips between paper blocks, is that correct?
There's turf that was installed that was not application.
All right, so what do we do about that? They're in violation.
So there's two things that you can do. You can sit back and wait until the Department of Environmental Protection issues its standards, or you can afford a code violation for them failing to obtain a building permit if that was required under your code, and you prosecute them before your special magistrate. So if you want to give direction to the city manager, you're supposed to handle that, or you're not able to make that decision, that's up to you.
Let me make sure I understand the new law, in that it's asking that the department issue minimum standards. So I would think that that means there's, there's some bar you have to be able to reach to be able to have it at all.
I'll just read the paragraph. What it says in the statute, Department of Environmental Protection should adopt a minimum standards for the installation of synthetic turf. On single-family residential property, one acre or less in size, the standards must take into account material type, color, permeability, stormwater management, fungal water concentration, water quality, proximity to trees and other vegetation, and other factors impacting the environmental conditions of the patient properties. So once they adopt those minimum standards in compliance with the state statute, we'll know that that's what applies to them.
I mean, is your, is your hunch that we are more generous than what will be minimum standards, or that the minimum standards might be more restrictive?
I think that, the way I'm reading this, is they want me to be able to use synthetic turf.
Is it concerned with water, they're not putting chemicals into the ocean because you're not fertilizing it, there's a lot of damage that's happening.
And now, if we provide our code, right?
Well, we'll have to revise our code. We won't be able to enforce our code if it doesn't comply with those standards. But there's also lots of arguments from environmental people saying that it doesn't allow water permeating into around their ward, stormwater runoff, it's going to degrade their wards, and of course, whatever's on the surface, bringing in the waterways. So it's a lot of arguments for things. I will know a little bit more when those standards are.
I have a suggestion. I think that this will probably be the smartest move for us, is that maybe the letter needs to be written and delivered to everyone that we believe is in non-compliance with current code, and let them know that, that we're waiting until the state establishes the standard, but you're all noticed that we're going to take a look at you after the fact so that we know how to address this issue. Because I don't want to tell somebody rip up their lawn and then unplay the floor and say, no, no, there's a, we should have been able to have that. We've seen that before in your neighborhood, in other materials. So I think that that would be the best route to go. What does everyone else think?
I agree.
Yeah. I don't think we have the dog in the fight here. I mean, I think the state's going to come in like Councilman said, says you want the chemicals reduced, that this is the way to reduce?
Hey.
Yeah. Whenever, whenever the government puts that word in, minimum, just, just about do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see. I would hope not, but it wouldn't be the first time that they've let you down. So anyway, City Manager Reefer, how would you like to address it?
I think it suggests it makes sense that, like, give them some notifications, because rather than carry them through, like, the great line that there's something wrong, and then, you know, explain to them what the situation is. When the state decides on their new one.
Yeah, up for transparency, and just let them know that, hey, currently, you're in non-compliance, but that may change, and we're not doing anything until we have the facts from the state.
I think that's good.
I do, I do like the suggestion that Jody had, which was all of them approached with it. So probably it would have been done, or it's all, you know, so that if repairs are done, it's on their responsibility.
Definitely.
But we'll have to wait and see.
We'll have to stake those because they're, they're impolite for helping the cause and responsibility on this one. We really don't have a, because we have the timeline on those minimum standards. Seems interesting, I think, if we pass a law, basically three of the bucket, it's one law, there's a law inside the bucket. It doesn't say so, establishment's in two years. I would hope for the next six months. I think that's direction. We should be taking.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just had a couple of things, and that is, you know, Litterage was very involved in that code review in 2021, and I know that it was a hot topic. I think that, I've been listening to the reviewing all the information, I think that the final, final code was written incorrectly based on what Lynn, Lynn, Lynn said that it's now approved, you can put artificial turf in your yard. So I think somewhere there was breakdown in communication. I don't think the intent was what we ended up with, and I don't know. I know that almost everyone who's on that code review, I mean, more his, but the city, there's not only the employees, but also residents. I think the only one remaining is Ernie Davis. So it would be interesting to hear whatever he has to say about their thinking on that.
How bad an idea.
Yeah.
Excuse me, can I ask everybody to move their microphones a little bit closer? They're having trouble hearing that here. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all I have. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Next up is the city manager report. Mr. Reefer?
Thank you, man. So just an update on the hurricane, as substantial damage. Structures were down to six. Structures were down to six that I have not heard any, anything from the owner. So I've been working with attorney Trask, putting together code violation notices to get some kind of follow-up, to get the action out of these, either a reevaluation or a, an application to either to a renovation project or a demolition. So I did some updates just to, you know, there may be some more elevate Florida. Right now I'm aware of seven applications of our SD determined structures. I know of eight that were determined substantially damaged that are demolishing. We have more demolitions on top of that, but that's how many were actually substantially damaged. And then we have, are sorry, eight that's demolished, I'm sorry, and ten that actually have demolished. And then there's more that were not substantially damaged. So we have more demolitions, probably closer to 20 to 30 from the city. And then I saw that I'm going to need to get their full permit package, repair packages, so that I can do their reevaluations. That's just a status update we're going to have. And then Duke is supposed to have a meeting to get started on making the final decisions of what we signed off on the railway equipment for phase two north of Cazod Boulevard, and then start on phase one. Again, I'm going to, in our meeting, try to get an exact date of whether you're beginning thing going. As you know, it's been, the conduit's been installed for quite some time, well over a year. But we're still waiting for Duke to get their crews out there to pull the cable through that conduit. The stormwater improvement, that's the hot topic. I have a forereport from Gemini summarizing everything in there, all manufacturers of the product that was used. The manufacturers, recommendations to correct where we need the outfalls shaped correctly to get the valves back in. So we have the forereport and I've provided with attorney Trask. I'm gathering the information on how many construction bases were added for the project and all extensions that were requested and granted. So they have those numbers and I'm going to provide that to the procurement specialist of attorney Trask's office, attorney Asher Felder. And he is going to help me write that letter, form those to the contractor to put some pressure to get this corrected as soon as possible. As far as the Seventh Street belt that we're looking at, mayor, our vice mayor Roberts put me in touch with another contractor because we've been trying, I think we're over 20 now, it's been difficult to get somebody out there to get an estimate for the dam we need to dry out the valve. But we are supposed to have another estimate given to us by tomorrow. Tomorrow on Wednesday, it said midweek, so I'm going to bother tomorrow. Getting that estimate, we hope it's a lower cost than our current estimate for a popper dam. But that will, that's what we need to just at least have a sanity check on pricing. But we'll know more by the time we get that estimate. I also have that control line belt that I wrote you guys about that would go as a backup preventer from the manhole. That would be the next upstream manhole from the outfall. I have that in my office. To get it into the box, we're going to have to possibly modify the ring above the manhole box. Again, we're not sure that that's the direction we're going to take. It's more of a backup measure, but I wanted to have that available to us because we need to have something to say safety. So that's where we're currently standing. Let me continue on to code review services. We did a, we had a meeting, we were able to have a meeting in June where we finished chapters 94, 30, 38, and we got all the way to chapter 50. So we're more than halfway through and we have another meeting scheduled. It's going to probably be early August because we have a number of some availability issues. But it was brought up by that Plaidland zoning board that they wanted to look at the section 94-135. Its uses for residential medium district one, which is our multifamily properties. Inside that, that code section, you have things like the floor area ratio and the impervious surface area ratio. And they want you to look at some of those restrictions per development, analyze the current properties that are developed of those lots and see what, what uses, what they're currently using the land for as far as density, as far as the floor area ratio and impervious surface area ratio, see how they compare those and possibly adjust those restrictions. Make a recommendation to city council of adjusting these restrictions for residential medium district one. I just wanted to make you aware that the board was looking at that.
Is this concerning to setbacks?
This is concerning density, floor area ratio, and impervious surface. It does, it does have some mention of setback, but that's, that's a separate subject. A lot of those properties do not follow the current setback code, just for information. So we have the Ninth Street pump station project is on the agenda as of tonight. And then the 75th celebration that we'd like to plan, we are pulling together the Department of Recreation Board tomorrow to avoid. We have two dates that we have blocked as a temporary hold, October 25th is Saturday and November 15th is Saturday.
Anything else?
Just wanted to mention that we, this, we got a request from one of our multifamily properties that we have a beach access easement with, and it's a 50-year easement that was done in the, I believe, early 2000s. As part of the beach reneursment program, we got a request to, to revert, it's a revert, actually, asking for a revert for the easement as part of the easement stipulation that we'd request that after 30 days that, that easement will no longer exist after the request. So we did get that from one of the four easements for beach access, and I just want to make the council aware of that. It's my understanding, I'm just speaking to attorney, attorney Trask, that there's really nothing that we can do once they've made that request and the time expires. But I thought maybe possibly we could ask them to reconsider that lobby.
Which beach access is it?
It would be the one granted by Tortugas County. The Stalton Mory.
I have a question. What does this do to beach nourishment in front of that?
So my understanding is these accesses, these easements, all were done by design to be the state's, with the mod legal that they took to be the serve, to get the grant funding. And these easements, the light racks, and all the parking that was made available just qualify us. So when we lose something like this, we no longer qualify for the grant funding.
Is there any, do we have anything else that we can give up in the event that we can't get this done on that again? That's a, is that a narrow access?
So it's a four-foot sidewalk that's located near the light rack. That was part of the Gulf Bolder penny money beautification. I think I see somewhat in proximity to that light rack. I mean, I would have to talk to Dr. Bishop about the exact numbers that that qualified to find out if there's any kind of substitution we could do.
Oliver, are they aware that they could disqualify all of Miller Beach from beach nourishment by doing this?
I have not specifically talked to them. I'm not sure what Kyle has provided to them. I don't really know any information that they know on. It was that, Oliver sent the letter saying pursuant to the resolution that was adopted all these years ago, we have this right and we're stepping forward to enforce that right.
And what were the conditions for that? You didn't respond quickly enough. What was the issue?
It's not responding quickly enough. It's the, it has to do with the actual beach reneurization project that took place many, many years ago. And evidently, I'm not sure where that is in relation to.
So one year outside of what the cycle we should have been on.
Did I hear you correctly? You signed a 50-year, which, you made?
Yes.
Reason?
The term, I don't have any fun with it. It was a 50-year time period, but there was a clause in there that was 30, it was requested version within 30 days of the easement. And I have not responded to that.
So basically what's happened, because there's been delay after delay after delay, and they're way overdue for beach nourishment, they've decided to opt out because the Army Corps of Engineers and the county did not fill their, their part of the obligation. Is that correct?
That's, that's the claim.
So you're saying that you do believe it's because the delay in nourishment, not just the general?
There's not much information in the letter and I haven't spoken.
So that's what we're assessing? We're saying that we think it's because of the delay?
I think probably.
Mr. Mayor, even under, they know that the county's going forward with the level beach nourishment, right?
You know, I'm not sure. What Kyle and I were discussing earlier today was the possibility of maybe drafting a letter and having everyone on the council sign and send it to them. Or possibly we, we have a meeting with them if they're willing to meet with us. But I think we need more information. And I'm sure that attorney Trask is on it and he's going to keep us up to date. And I really hope that this does not ruin our chances of getting beach nourishment because it would be very easy for them just to skip us, just like they skipped Bellar Shore.
Is there any argument that would excuse us on the basis of our impossibility of performance?
There's nothing in that resolution that you can hang your hat on that I can see. It wasn't even the four easement that would have been recorded in the public records. The grant, here we get a grantee, they would show the conditions and it would show, you know, specific legal descriptions and so forth. It was a resolution that was adopted by this council a number of years ago saying, we will do this if you do that. It wasn't done the way that a real estate attorney would have to be done. And I don't know the reasoning for the way the reason was done that way. There has to have been some, some reason. But it's the way the document is drafted, it's not held against the city.
Here's another question. Are all of our beach accesses that way?
They're all the same. From what I was able to see.
So maybe we lose.
No, I'm talking about the four-foot sidewalk beach access.
Right, that's right. The plus six of them, yeah.
Yes, four.
So we need to be proactive with the other ones, probably.
I'm thinking that it's, this is more of an education, an opportunity for education. Make them aware. I mean, they saw what happened. We didn't have a beach and, you know, we had a little bit of a dune, but anywhere where it was broken, it was a catastrophe. And we saw concrete lifted up. We saw, you know, lawns wrecked, cools wrecked, sliding glass doors wrecked. We saw everything because we did not have beach nourishment. Now we're right on the very edge of getting it. And they're going to do it right. It's supposed to be five feet deep in sand, three feet high dune, and it's going to go like 125 feet out or something, something sort of like that. It's a lot of sand and we need it. We need it for our protection.
Well, because of that, could we not take it by, and then the domain?
So there has to be, first of all, there has to be a public purpose for that taking of that private property. And there are some, I'm not sure when you, when that case came out 15 years ago, whether your charter provides that you can take private property for those types of purposes. I need to look at the charter to see if there's something out into that.
I mean, there's literally a public purpose here. So it would sort of better for the entire community.
It's in our constitution. Plus, there's a couple of cases in Walton County where something like this happened. Where like the Supreme Court Judge Lea, who passed the decision, forced a million owners to take the new church.
So we'll look into that and we'll come back to you with some type of process and what publishers do or what. I don't even know if I'll get the timeline.
In the meantime, I'd like to ask the council not to vocally speculate or over speculate or even guess because we don't know. Anything that's said could, could very well hurt our situation. So we need to handle this very carefully and it's definitely a concern. Let's wait and see what, what Tom comes back with and hopefully we'll have some guidance on what to do next. So.
Yeah, like your approach of that, stay a little time to listen and then maybe dedicate and see what we stand up for that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if they realize that they're inherently losing beach nourishment. I think that's the problem. It's an area, I think, that thinking of deep end is very, very, and it's dangerous.
Part of it might be the traffic on the beach. It might be the, the activities directly on the beach there. And in between Morgan Park and in between the Bellar Beach Hotel, that is our resort, wherever is very active. You know, doing beach cleanup where the mess is, and they're dead in there.
I guarantee you're 100%, 99%, it's beach active. Like, as you get on the beach, you know?
Yeah, and we won't know until they leave that public hall moving on. So we'll need it to come, our attorney to get it.
Okay. Anything else?
That was all. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Kyle, you mentioned on the stormwater, the pipeline repair, that's the first one you mentioned, right? And you said, and I read the letters and stuff, so I'm up on that. So we're going to take this approach trying to be careful how we, see if we can get that to help us, right? We're trying to work on that, right?
We've done the whole work and we're basically telling them how to do it.
Right, right. And it says you're suggesting a deadline. What's a rough, can we get a rough idea of a deadline we're going to set?
I want to talk to attorney Asher Felder to get, you know, what he thinks.
Of another, or another attorney?
Yeah, he's a, he's a procurement specialist for Tom Smith Burger.
Any rough guess or you just don't even feel like any public data yet?
I, I just don't know what's customary. I'm just kind of feeling, I, mine is going to be pushing it as soon as possible, right? I don't want to be.
I'm definitely, I'm definitely here. I'm sure you guys are here. Lots of complaints about the check valves.
Here, here's, here's a question. I got two residents. They were out of their houses for months. Lots of their driveways got ruined because the bobcats pushed trash into the street and everything like that. So they took the time and energy and had one to restore their driveways. Seal code, you know? And now the salt order.
Salt order is even a good, right?
So you're saying, why am I paying the store for the hassle? Should I be suing the city? Should I be suing the contractor? I think they have a legitimate.
Right. Now this, the pipeline one is more like for ninth and some of the other streets, right? It's not such a big issue for the Seventh Street one.
It is ninth, 12th, 13th, 18th, 14th, and 15th and 16th.
So yeah, the, the seventh one, I got a separate complaint for the Seventh and Eighth Street, which is the second topic I wanted to raise. So, but anyway, so in the meantime though, I mean, I'm trying to think of how long to wait for this feedback. And is there, should there be something we can do, shorter, temporary, like put the check valve in maybe? Some temporary seal around it to help it work for a little bit until we can get, I don't really know. for a little bit until we can get, I don't know, I don't really know, I can imagine how I might repair my own pipe, but you know?
So we looked at two things. We looked at, we got, that's what the idea of the short body valve is, is something temporary. And then we also looked at.
The word for Ninth Street? The short body valve?
So, so the, so there could be a, a temporary solution for all, but each one of these valves run about $60,000.
Is that six?
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand dollars.
So ordering like five valves for temporary?
Right, right, okay. Okay. Now I was thinking of ways that we could use the existing valves and, because right now they're, the, the seal is not good enough and it's just going to blow past them, right?
So the reason we didn't do the, the duct billed temporary valve in outside is because we stick the water getting down through the ground so we can think that would be effective at the side of them for the next seven minutes to get the short body valve. Because I know that that would have been sealed from that point.
That's for the Ninth Street?
That's for Seventh Street.
Okay, well, I'm still saying on the Ninth Street.
Oh, sorry, thanks.
So on the Ninth Street, it's the Ninth Street, then it's Fourth, then all the liner issue, right? That's how the, where it's all wavy and you want to seal the check valve to a wavy round surface, right? It's going to be a lot of cracks for order to come back around. What can we do temporarily to help that work while you're getting this vendor or supplier to correct the problem?
So I'm not impressed, how's your, the winter river is a hopefully some kind of solution that they can come up with?
Okay, so maybe they can provide us a temporary, short-term solution while they work on the more permanent correction.
I don't know if they can, but if they have access to.
Okay. So we asked for, well, okay. All right. Just get some pressure to really move on that a little more. Okay, on the Seventh Street one, which we know that's a different problem. That's not a liner issue, that's a concrete, how they stuck it in there, right? The concrete issue, leaks right through a lot of that. So we're going to build this big dam around it so that we can get in there and then figure out how to fix it, right? We just got to get all the water away, it's having to be dry, so we can insert. And we've gotten one quote. We, we got a second one, you said coming tomorrow or?
Long as I hold them while they seven minute be.
How many quotes do we need to move forward?
I have one. We don't, we can operate with one if we had, if we had to, but I'd like to see one.
Okay, all right. One more, okay. And then again, for that scenario, I don't know how long and timing, like that's once we pick it and then we're going to, again, move forward with it. I don't know how long it's going to take to construct it, but it sounds like weeks, months type of thing?
No, we, once we have an estimate, we move forward or appeal, it sounded like they'd probably normalize in a week or so.
Oh, we're talking about.
They'll name up in about a week, once we commit, once we get in.
Yeah, and we're looking at a window of about a month. We're asking, it'd be less if we get in there and repair it faster.
And this is going to be out of our pocket for now while we, I know we're still pursuing some re-nourishment for, you know, either the engineering guidance that was poor or the construction design that was poor or whatever, but I know they messed up, right?
Yes.
They messed up.
I mean, I originally had it booked at, by Attorney Trask, for, that's the way, the way the change order, it was not the original plan, the change order was accepted, I don't think there's anything proposed.
All right. But at least we're going to move forward and I don't, we can talk later about if we want to pursue any re-nourishment or anything.
We're going to, we're going to be stuck with the bill.
We're expected to build whatever, 50,000 or whatever, but it needs to be, so we can work out. At least my opinion is that we could wait to work on it. Don't wait to, to solve the legal problem.
You're talking about Seventh Street?
Seventh Street, yeah. The Seventh Street one, yes, I'm talking about the Seventh Street one that is going to put the dam around so we can fix it. It's way down on Seventh Street. I think that's what they're not doing lots of pictures. It is the worst street of all from that flow.
That's what I've heard.
Oh, checked out. It's the worst, my.
All last week, I heard nothing but a desperate cry for help.
Yeah, desperate cry for help, so.
All last week, we had anywhere from two feet of water in there and crushed the street.
Right, right. So I appreciate that. So as I was, it's interesting to hear that you think we can maybe get this dam thing up and say like Big Dam Man, whenever, Hoover Dam, not too long ago, Big Dam Man. The, yeah, so maybe we're going to do something into the, or we, we sorry, something like, it's in that ballpark. I don't want to block any commitment.
So it's like.
It seems like it's in that ballpark.
The good news is once the dam is installed, then we have pump operating, so we can actually take care of the problem with the dam.
Okay. Temporarily while we try to hold this temporarily until we get the proper seal on it off and then we tear down the dam and now we're hopefully working correctly.
Okay. So we're going to have a pump operating the entire time the dam is erected?
Well, it'll be a large problem. It'll kick on whenever this, whatever this.
That should leave a problem, which will also be a good length status for the argument of making a pump, right?
That's true.
Yes, absolutely.
Early signs on that, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I guess I won't push on trying to find even shorter temporary solution for Seven.
If you can, I'm going for anything.
I, I don't really have any great ideas and the check valve's still in there, right? It's, it's in there.
The body of it, ducted, inside of it.
Oh, you took, you took that?
Lapar valve?
Yeah, well, lapar valve is happening. Okay, okay, there is a check valve there, okay.
In the case of Seventh Street, I don't know if this is possible or not, but I would like to propose adding some weighting to the weighting. So if one of them is a long weight and it's cheaper and one of them is a short weight and it's a little more, I would say go with a little more because it's, these, these people are suffering down there right now and we've just had record high highs over and over and over. You can always tell because when you're coming home at five o'clock, it's a record of them. So you know what's coming around the hole.
Okay.
All right, so, so Seventh Street, let me, let me just review this. So Seventh Street is our fault or are we?
No, not our fault.
Not our fault, but it's our.
Are you addressing the city manager or, sorry, are you addressing orders?
I'm, I'm addressing the manager, but I welcome any other comments. My understanding is that at least right now, we're looking at Seventh Street as our issue to resolve and we've got a temporary solution. We're going to be able to move ahead, get the dam, which will fix the pump, and that takes care of Seventh Street. Am I stating that correctly?
Then that is the plan.
All right, then for the other streets, how many are there where the check valve has been removed?
Er, Fourth, Ninth, 12th, 13th, and 18th, so five.
Okay, I thought there were more, so that's, that's five? All right, I thought there were more. So, so for that, we're in the middle of storm season. We have no check valve at all in, in these areas. So what, and, and we're going to talk tomorrow in terms of trying to get a demand letter out tomorrow and this will go to the, will it go to our general contractor, the general contractor or to the sub?
I said, go to the general contractor.
Okay, so go to the general contractor. What is our temporary plan there? Because let's assume that this is not going, they're not going to roll over presumably or they would have taken accountability during these last many months. So what's the temporary plan for these remaining streets?
I, I don't have a temporary plan, plan because of the order time. So we, we looked at these duct billed valves, if they're on the outside, they could, they could be temporary. Not only the prices are determined, but they, they're custom made valves, so they, they were six-weekly in time. So I really didn't see that. I was hoping the possibility of once they have notice, that they have access to something in stock or through, possibly have a temporary solution, but that's, that's the most option.
So these, these check valves were not repairable?
The, the valves are in shape, good shape, they're repairing, they just can't get back into the pipe.
Okay, and that's on five streets.
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of asking, reach for herics, right? Maybe since they're, you know, frequently serviced and you put the check valve in, the check valve's funny, it's the pipe that we're putting in that's bad. We're trying to put it into a pipe and it won't seal up against the pipe. So I asked him, okay, what is a backup option? And he said he didn't have one yet, but he said, he said he might want to talk to the vendor or if that's going to do this repair and hopefully fix it. And he said he would ask him if there's some other backups that we could do in the short term while we wait for them to settle this repairing of the liner. It's the liner that's, that we lined all the pipes with that's damaged or is not round. So you can't put a round gasket into a non-round hole. Like put this, you know, put a round thing in a square bag, not going to work.
Here's, here's the situation. It's our street, there are pipes, our vendor made some serious mistakes.
Right.
We're going to go after them to try to make them accountable for that there, but in the, in the meantime, we still have a responsibility to take care of our streets. And my suggestion would be that they, when you negotiate with them, you can say, look, you fixed this, you're accountable, there's no question. You, you deal with this and deal with it immediately. Or we will get somebody to deal with it immediately and that will be at their cost for which this errant provider will be responsible.
And that's what I knew that I asked.
They, they can mitigate their own damages by taking care of themselves now. And if not, then we need to go out and take care of it and take care of our citizens. And whatever cost that is, they're going to have to bear it at some point.
I'm totally agree.
I'm like, I've been having a work session when the tides were under 2.8 feet, you know, what you wanted to push, go to get work it out in a reasonable manner. Now, story of the war, come on down to Seventh Street, Eighth Street, Ninth Street at 10:00 in the morning, you'll have a border in the street. And you know, you'll have a border in the street till next Tuesday until the tide goes back to 2.8.
So do we need to put something in this document we've been working on with Gemini to include the temporary fix until they can do the permanent fix? Do we need to put something in the document that requests that as well?
I think the best way would be a letter from the city with a report as a, or referencing the report. I am not focused in the term that you do.
Okay.
But I want to go over all this.
Okay, appreciate that, you're welcome. Thanks.
I guess the last question I have is, are we worse or better off than we were before we pulled out the, the check valves?
Right now, we're worse off. Once we have them all back, it would be better off because there's a risk. Because I'll tell you, after this project, anytime we're messing with a valve, the locations can be a lot of different considerations. I didn't realize.
One at a time. Different situation than when we originally brought in. I would say one at a time for sure. All right, any other questions or comments before I move on to the city clerk report?
Can I ask?
Yes.
Steven. I have a resident reach out on ICCD on my response related to the city's Marina parking. What is the current structure? Is it public parking or is it permanent parking?
It's, it's part mobile parking, so that lot has its own number and it's sistered the app.
So the complaint was that effectively residents were being, I'd say harassed, but effectively people were paid for parking in the Marina parking lot on the daily rate and cutting through the condominiums and effectively they were complaining about abuse. They were jumping in the pool, they were bringing the cars in, unloading the cars, they were carrying chairs through the patio area. So I guess the question I really have is, do we have a significant utilization rate for Marina parking or non-resident parking? Or is it something that we should consider making permanent open parking? Or is it something that we should be working with the condominiums as far as what should they do to restrict access to the property for people cutting through?
It's a minimal revenue source, Marina Park lot, it did its best here publicly and that really did set off a lot of the condominium properties there when they were getting a lot of traffic. They died down since. There is a, one of those easement four-foot accesses right there, so there's an easier access point for that lot. I don't know what's changed where these people are deciding to go on private property. That's what they're stuck. So I don't know if we want to cut off the lot completely because of that, but we definitely, the, the place did respond and we definitely will have a place respond if we're aware of the activity.
Should we look at the movement directed control for that parking lot just so there's, because the complaint was that they called the police, the police say they have to physically see the interaction happen and therefore they can't act if they haven't physically seen the view beyond this.
I just wouldn't want to like sit, like, not sit there.
I'm, I'm just trying to hear how to, I, I think it's a combination of a bunch of things. I think the, the, I think the condominium associations have to do something to protect the property, but I think the city also needs to kind of mitigate access as far as how are they accessing the properties. These four-foot easements have become an interesting conversation too, if those easements go away, what happens as far as cross traffic through the condominiums and people? This is a much bigger issue than, than I think just a topical issue about how people park. I just wanted to raise the topic to see if there was, if shutting off parking to non-residents and making it a permanent open lot, does that solve the problem or is that just one exact straight problem? I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out what are the options we can present between associations and ordinance?
Doesn't that, Marina Park, help us with beach nourishment for public access because that was required.
Part of those requirements.
Second of all, the condominium association should put up a code access at their parking facility, that's not the city's responsibility. There's so many private security firms that can control that. They're going to have the belly up for it. I mean.
I believe it's a combination. I think we need to address our side, but I think they need to address theirs.
Well, we have one deputy and we can't have that deputy park down there because people walking through the beach, beach area. Like again, you live on the beach, what do you think people do? They go to the beach, all right? Don't live on the beach if you don't want to see that access.
I think it's more, I don't think it's about the access, I think it's more about the cut through and the abuse.
Well, it is, but I mean, yeah, but that's why you're, you're cutting through to get to the beach.
All right, so are we solving the problem or are we just having a discussion? Remember, just having a discussion, I'd like to move on. All right. My view of that?
Yeah.
All right. Now we're out to item number seven. I can't. Do it.
Excuse me, excuse me, if I can go back just a minute. Because I'm not, I'm not hearing any kind of finality in terms of the check valves. I'm wondering, should we call a special meeting and so that we?
Say what, let's put it on a work session so we can discuss it further, okay? Because I don't think we have a solution at this time.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is that if we don't have one now, we need to hear the input of what's going to hit place in the next two days or whatever and then be able to put a plan in place.
I still think it's going to require a work session and we don't have anything carved out in this meeting that's going to resolve this tonight.
I understand that what I'm asking you for is that we schedule either a special meeting or some sort of work session now so that we know.
I would encourage you to work that out, city manager, Ray Clark, and see if he'll call a meeting.
Very good.
All right. Okay, back to the city clerk report. Anthony, you have a floor?
Okay, I just have the report I turned in and then just to let council know, Monday through Wednesday, I will be at the clerks conference, so I will be out of the office.
All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Any questions or comments for the city clerk? All right. Moving on to items eight and nine, this is the consent agenda. This is for approval of the June 2nd, 2025 city council meeting minutes and approval of the June 23rd, 2025 city council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve is written in for second.
Motion is made by council member Baker, who has a second.
Second.
Second by council member Shirley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passage. Now we are on to item number 10. This is consideration of ordinance 2025 dash zero two. This is a second reading. City Attorney Trask, would you please read the ordinance and provide us a brief summary of the, of the subject?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to read this ordinance by title only, city of Vellar Beach, ordinance number 2025 dash zero two, ordinance of the city council of the city of Vellar Beach, Florida, amended Article Five, Code Enforcement, Division Two, Code Enforcement Procedures Generally of the Vellar Beach Code, ordinances providing for the use of special magistrate, the code enforcement hearings, removing reverences of town marshal and special master, providing for revised definitions and revised procedures, preventing the process, applying of mean reductions, providing for implementation, providing for resolution of conflicts, providing for severability and providing for effective aid. That was the second final reading of that ordinance by title only. As you know, there are some suggested changes to the code to bring it more current with the specific Florida statute, which is in chapter 162. This ordinance does a couple of different things. It basically changes wording of special master, the special. It basically changes the wording of special master, the special magistrate to be in compliance with that statute. It removes some outdated language that was in your code relative to town marshals and other small things, and also added in a procedure or a process, applying reductions in the ordinance. And I believe that covers the main topics of the ordinance. That is basically just to update the kind of the consistent current, this current state statute.
Thank you. Would any citizen like to comment on this ordinance before we move ahead? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to approve ordinance 2025-02.
So moved.
Second. That was Councilmember Shirley, and?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. In that case, Councilmember Billy, you have the floor.
All right, this is just a preliminary change to the ordinance to make it more consistent with the rest of code and to deal with the more modern way to deal with this. That's very important.
Other comments or questions, any debate or discussion on this ordinance? Well, in that case, Kathy, would you please call the ordinance?
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye. So the ordinance passes unanimously. Very much everyone. All right, we are on to item number 11. This is consideration to adopt Resolution Number 2025-03 to increase solid waste collection rates. City Attorney Trask, would you please read the resolution and provide any additional details for the council?
Yes, this is Resolution Number 2025-03, resolution of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, permitting the consumer price index, indicated increase to the city's solid waste collection and disposal rates, making related findings and providing severability and effective date. As a background, you'll remember that the city intervened to an agreement for the collection of solid waste or certain materials in October of 2023. The agreement specifically provides for CPI increases capped at 4% for the collection rate. Also, it allows for disposal rate increases. The vendor has asked for the captive increase of 4% for the collection rate and an 8% increase relatively to the disposal rate. This resolution provides for those two increases. Section 1 of the resolution provides that beginning on October 1, 2025, the solid waste collection rate shall be for multi-family dumpster, $53, for multi-family can, $58.50, for single family, $61.50. Also, beginning October 1, 2025, the solid waste disposal rate shall be increased to $58.86 per ton. That covers the resolution.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the council, would anyone, any citizens like to comment on this resolution? All right, as we have done, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-03. Motion is made by council member Banker, who has a second.
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Vice Mayor Roberts. Mr. Banker, you have the floor. We have no choice. Not said. Any other comments from the council? Debate, discussion?
Can I ask a clarif- Why does, why does a dumpster cost less than a single family? I believe that's per, per year. Per annual rate? Yeah, per year of fees. When they initially established these rates, I don't know the reasoning of how they started. All I've been doing is keeping the proportions with the increases. So if it's ever something that we wanna analyze or look at. It just seems strange that a multi-family dumpster, $53, and a single family, $161.
Well, wait a minute now, this is not just, this isn't a dumpster, this is per unit, I believe, in the condo. So every, every condo owner pays this amount for one pickup, how they can. Okay?
All right. I, I, I'm, that's not a pickup.
They give a discounted rate for not having that multiple pickups.
Got it.
All right, any other comments or questions about this? All right, let's take it to a, we'll call a vote. Kathy?
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye. So the Resolution 2025-03 passes unanimously. I think we have to do it, but maybe the county, the county gets what the county wants. All right, now we are on to item number 12, which is consideration of invitation to bid the Ninth Street Pump Station Project. City Manager, Ray Clark, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. So with the last work session, we discussed the two pump sizes. We have the original pump, which is the SEA 308, and then we have the 312, which is the larger pump, it's twice the capacity. The Gemini completed their analysis of the pump station and did modeling, presented that in the work session. We also did a comparison table, put the pumps side by side to try to show how the project would change. But I just want to remind everyone that the larger pump is, is, is a conservative estimate. It's not, they have not actually done the design work, so it could be lost. And member, member Anders Wellings did the, he did some homework on his own, and he has some supporting information. And I did bounce that off of Gemini. They, again, they don't, they, they don't wanna give an actual estimate for the, for the larger pump size until they actually do all the design work, because they feel like, if they put their name on it, they would like to have it do that work. But, so we have two pump sizes. We know that one, one's gonna be roughly about $665,000 is the estimate for the, for the smaller pump, the original design. And then, you know, through our analysis and our reporting, we wanted to look into a larger sized pump and how that would affect the project. And that's why we have that larger pump size. And then during our work session, you know, we won't, we discussed it, we didn't quite arrive on which plan we thought was better, or consensus by council, but I did put this on, if we are to put it to bid, because there is, there's two sides, you know, we obviously wanna analyze and set ourselves up for the best project to learn from in the future of the city, but we also have a lot of residents in that area that have been dealing with this nuisance flooding for a very long time and that may wanna see action. So I wrote two recommendations. One, one would be that we do, we do put this pump station out to bid, where we currently stand, I feel that, that the original pump size project, everything that was originally discussed when Gemini formulated that proposal, for what member Banker was looking for, and back then I was a former member of council, but I thought that that, that still was on point with what we were intending when we decided to move forward with the design of the project. But if we, there is a, there is a risk that if we do bid out this pump station and we're not quite ready to award it, that we may lose on the project, which could have done the work and get a better price. So an alternative recommendation, I've forgotten the Gemini, you know, we could approach contractors that have experience in this work and ask for it, it would be an unofficial bid, but we would have solid numbers from contractors that do this work to give us a better idea for the next budget workshop, which is on the 21st of this month, so that we can discuss the strategic plan and how we're gonna budget this in the future.
All right, before we, we go to questions and comments from the council, or we go to debate on this, I want to take this to the citizens for comments. I'm gonna call up Mr. Will first, because I cut him off, and now it's your time.
No problem. As I said, I attended that work session, I was kinda disappointed because I went home and the only solution that we had was to come up with a bid. Not necessary, because what is that going to solve? We need a solution. So the solution can only be, first of all, if we have a deadline. They have no deadline. This goes on for years and years and years. If we, you have to set a deadline when this project is going to be finished. The second is, no bid, we have to find out, do we want a small pump or a large pump? Just vote on that and then get going. And the third is, like council member Shirley mentioned at the meeting, we have no money. Well, but you have no solution. So with other words, if you know you don't have the money, then find a way how to get the money. You know, you might have to assess them, assess the citizen here in Bella Beach. But as I said, if you don't have a deadline, nothing will happen. And it's gonna be another year and another year and another year. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Will. We have other citizens that would like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Hope we did have, all right, please come up and give us your name and address.
My name's Laurie Mullin, I live at 941 Cedar Drive, or I used to live there until my house got torn down. I am concerned about the flooding as well. You mentioned Seventh, Eighth, Ninth Street. Cedar Drive has been flooding since the day I moved in. The end of the street, we were promised before the hurricane that the pump would be fixed. I guess there's some kind of closure that means at the end of the street where the water comes in from the sewer, every high tide, full moon, in the fall. But it started early this year. I've seen it flood already this year. And we were promised that it would be taken care of before the hurricane, Halene. They were paving the road, doing the curbs over, and it was gonna be taken care of then. Well, it hasn't been done. I've been promised so many times, I've been told so many times by different people that are present, that this is on the agenda, it will be taken care of. I didn't hear one word about it. Have any idea about Cedar Drive? That's my question.
Thank you. Any other comments? Citizen comments? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, so we can start discussing this, can I get a motion for authorization from the city manager to put this job out to bid? Motion. Motion is made by council member Banker, who has a second.
Second.
Who said that?
Elliott.
Okay. All right, Mr. Banker, you have the floor. My only question on this whole thing is, what size pump? I stayed before, I'm for the bigger pump. I think we can utilize the bigger pump for other streets in the future if this works. And that's the only, that's the only setback I have. I don't, I really don't believe the added cost of these pushes. It's speculative to the additional size. Councilmember Will, do you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to build on that topic. So yeah, yeah, I'd say first and foremost, you know, I support moving forward with the bidding process, then support putting the pump in eventually once we get that. However, I would still like to keep the option open to ultimately move forward with a larger pump, which has twice the capacity. And my, my thought process behind that is that when he did the assessment, and I spoke with the Gemini engineering firm, you know, they selected, debated a lot, they selected the third worst rain. We wanted some history to build a case for what size pump it was, and let's just throw a dart and pick a pump. Like, let's do some actual analysis. Can't predict the future, but we can review the history. So when he did that for me, he picked the storm that we gave pictures for. It happened to represent the third worst rain event in 2024. And as you know, when he did the modeling, he showed that indeed, the pump would basically keep all the water from that event in the storm sewer system. So it wouldn't even be on the street. That would've been, that sounds great, right? But I think it's important to recognize that there's two, there were two larger events that happened in that same year. And, and that's why I asked Gemini Engineering to consider some larger events, you know, they weren't willing to, I guess, look at a specific event, but they then chose to say, well, let's just add 50% rate to it, and maybe that represents one of the storms that's bigger. And so they did that assessment, and in that case, the pump that they recommended does not clear the street. And, you know, it doesn't, and I'm worried, I'm thinking more about peak flooding. I mean, I know it's important to think about how fast the rain goes away from the street, but I think it's also important to consider the peak flooding. I mean, I don't think it would care a lot if they're flooded, if their garages get flooded and it went away really quickly. The garage still got flooded. So I felt that it's important to assess peak flooding as well. So when I thought of that, that's when he showed us the one and a half, you know, 50% greater, you know, rainfall example, which I assume might capture some of these more realistic, some of these events that actually happened. And in that case, I guess in those examples, the, the rain did, in that example, it did enter the driveways, it did potentially enter the garages, if I did this one, this 50% increase example. So that, that's one reason why I think the larger pump would, would better ensure protection for us. I did do some homework on some numbers. I know it's, it's, I'm not a pump expert, but I have an engineer, and I know a little bit about the dynamics and stuff and so on, but Gemini is the original estimate. I used that estimate, and I took the number they generated for like the 650 amount, and I built, I just did line by line, is it impacted if we go to a bigger pump? Is this line impacted by a bigger pump? And the majority of them are not impacted by going to a bigger pump. And just some rough estimates, I said, it's not gonna be $200,000, it's probably gonna be closer to like $40,000. The pump itself is like $15,000 more expensive, that's all. So to me, again, I think that's a worthwhile investment. If we're gonna do this pump, we're gonna spend 650. To me, spend the additional 42 and buy some more insurance, greater protection. I think these storm events are likely to get worse. So I think that would give us better protection. It would also, I think this double capacity, this, you know, twice the capacity in this pump would also better position us for future expansions. This investment would be possibly, yeah, but like we talked, I think Gemini said that we could possibly link in Seventh and Eighth, and I do believe this does address Cedar Drive as well, because it's tied into Ninth Street. So this whole pump in check valve issue we've been talking about does include Cedar Drive in that, in that picture. But I, I pictured, I guess it better positions us for the future storms without having to spend another 650 the next time. But we, this is a pilot to consider expanding future streets, and we know we have more than what we have. We probably have three or four streets to consider, maybe five streets to consider investing in. So I, that's my question.
Thank you. We go to this side, Councilmember Elliott.
Well, obviously, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this. It's been many years in the making. It is time to move forward with some definitive action. We are in the middle of this storm season. If we act now, we might have something by next storm season. So I think that's important to keep in mind also. This is part of our responsibility as a city, is that we have to have safe streets, we have to have a flood control management program, and this is part of it. So we're addressing this street first as the pilot, as a learning opportunity, so that we can make any kind of improvements or to the advantage of some enhancements, as Anders has just suggested. So I think this is a good plan to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Shirley, I'm gonna connect you just a minute. Mr. Robert?
I tend to lean towards the larger pump, mainly for the fact that we're dealing with nine monthly time for pump construction. So the idea that we are planning for capacity today and not planning for capacity tomorrow, I think that the investment of the insurance of the bigger pump would be the way to go.
Councilmember Shirley.
I, in the construction business, I'll say it's foolish to go to bid a project we're not certain we can move forward with. So I believe Kyle's suggestion to ask for some proposals rather than taking to an official bid is a good idea. Because as we go into budget season, we have to have some idea what this is going to cost. The $600,000 price has been sitting up for about four or five years. So that number is probably not a very accurate number. I, I would be interested to see some numbers so we can figure out how to tackle it. But going to an official bid is a mistake.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Roberts.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Shirley. I've worked for other government agencies for more than a little while. I've never seen a bid go out for any project that did not already have a budget assigned to it. And any contractor that you talk to that bids government projects will always come in and ask, what's budgeted for this job? And because if we have to give that to them, they'll know that. They then follow that up with, if they don't think they can do the job for the budgeted amount of money, they won't, they won't put the time and effort into it. But they're going to want to know that number. They're not going to bid on a project typically. Well, they probably have never seen that before. When they ask, what's budgeted for this project? And the government agency says, we don't have money budgeted for it yet. They're going to be reluctant to spend any time on it. So I also agree that having Gemini speak with the contractors that they're familiar with, to get some numbers from them without going out to an official bid is the right way to go.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reefer, I would like to ask you what your thoughts are on number one, budgeting. If you were to put this out for bid, how would you pay for it?
Well, personally, when this project started, it was, again, we were talking kind of a little bit more simpler. We were talking pilot, we were talking pretty, pretty rough design, concept wise, and learning from the experience. But now when we're looking at upgrading, we've done a lot of more evaluation. You know, I mean, I understand residents want this done immediately, but when you're talking about budgeting and planning, I would recommend that we do an analysis of our debt and kind of lay out our payment plan for our current bond issue. And then base kind of like our surplus of our reserves and what we feel we can build into that budget before we make any decisions at that time.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
I think that if an informal request for proposal information would be faster, perhaps? I think if it's less formalized, it might be faster. And would you think it would be just as accurate?
I think it's going to be pretty close because the contractor is not going to want to put their time into it unless they have a, a number that they can work with. So, and, and it will be a lot quicker turnaround than an actual bid in the time period involved.
So what I'm hearing is that there is an opportunity to amend this to, to, I guess, ask for estimates for budgeting purposes? Is that what I would be, is that what that sounds like?
It was what Gemini was suggesting, right? I mean, that was the Gemini recommendation. They would do a better estimate for us. Is that what I heard, Kyle, you said?
So everything is based on, we want it done now or we want it done as soon as possible. So if we, if we can make a decision that we want to design a larger pump, I'd like to get them started at least on those hours of, of putting that together so that they can do that work. And then we could, we could bounce the design now of this smaller pump to get at the numbers. But once they have the design done for the larger, that's the direction I want to go, then I'd like to get those numbers as well.
But the priority is to, to work the budget strategy. In order to do that effectively, we need, are, are you feeling that the estimates we have right now are going to be effective to go into a budgeting scenario with it?
I feel Gemini has done their homework for the 650. I think that's
And you think that was still?
I don't, I don't think this is needed as, as four or five years because they gave over the number this year for their design. So I feel confident and I feel like they, they're confident about that number. That's why they gave it to us. But with the larger pump, they did not want to do it unless they actually did do the design with it. So I'd like to get them started. That's the direction I want to go. I'd like to get them working.
So before someone does a motion to amend this, this consideration of bidding and changing it over to an estimate for budgeting, just so that everyone out there would know, what does that, what type of timeline does that allow for establishing a budget and having, having the money to actually pay for a project like this?
Okay, so we get, Gemini said it would take about 30 hours to do the next design up. If I get them going on it, I think that depending on how much other workload they have, that they can get that done in a matter of a couple, two or three weeks, they can at least have that design done and do the, and speak to some contractors to get the numbers for that. And then as far as analyzing our reserves, we, I gotta ask, Mr. Quill, I think that our, our finance gets all money. I need to have her do what she did prior to the bond issue and do an analysis of a five year old, kind of our protections. That might take about the same amount, I need to check with her. But I would like, this is something that we've discussed prior to the hurricane hit. We got into that whole recovery period. It's something that we discussed with the citizens, citizens engineering, we wanted to analyze and start talking about paying back this bond. And I mean, I got sidetracked. So I get, that was my steps. I didn't speak to Mr. Quill and only about creating that report, having done my budget workshop or soon after, if we did another meeting. But that, that would play with the analysis. But I'd like to get, I'd like to get Gemini started on pump design. If we can at least have consensus from council, that that's the direction we, we want them to focus on.
Council?
What's the budget for another 30 hours?
Oh, their rates, they vary per position. I think the most senior engineer is, is still at 100, 300 dollars an hour.
Did you say 100?
100, yeah. I have to pull the rate sheets. I mean, it, it won't be, you know, 30 dollars 30 times. It won't be that large. I mean, they haven't actually asked for it, but I think at this point, after the original proposal, asking them to design a whole separate plan, I feel like we, we should pay them initial hours.
We already have Gemini under contract for developing all of the plans and specifications to go out with it?
Yes, that was in the
So they haven't, they haven't actually done it yet?
No.
So that would take some time. And I would assume that even the contractors that they're going to be speaking with, they probably want to be able to give them, I mean, from a contractor, they say what he expects. So I can give you a price that I think is accurate.
Right, so, so they can start getting pricing now with, with looking at design, but
Okay.
Well, I don't think we should be a fear of having a contractor not entertaining seriously. Contractors, big work, hoping to get work, sometimes are up against one contractor. Sometimes they're up against dozens of contractors. You miss, whenever you bid on a government job, you're always at risk of that government pulling the bid before it starts and even during the project. I'll give you two examples. The wall. Donald Trump put the wall in effect, Joe Biden stopped it overnight. Another one is Marcel, Marcel Shale project for gas. Went into effect, Joe Biden comes into office, stopped overnight. Contractors just had it up and leave. So every contractor is going to look at the opportunity, like, want this job? And they're going to bid the job whether they want it or not. So we need, we need to get this, I don't know how else to put, we need to have the crap, take the crap and get over the pot. I mean, this, this is long enough. This is, we can just keep on talking about it, talking about it, and watch the work keep eating away. People's driveways, their lawns, everything like that. It's not going to get any better. So I don't know why we just don't do this job. I mean, we have a stormwater tax. I'm all for raising the stormwater, I hate raising taxes. I, I'm all for putting a bond together. We put a stormwater $2.5 million bond, I believe, a year and a half ago for the city to get these jobs done. Look at what the saltwater's done to their streets already, it's cracked, all right? Because my argument was you can't put one inch of blacktop down over one inch. You can't put one inch of blacktop over existing cracks where those cracks will come back. I ran that by the Gemini Engineering. I was in the blacktop business for 40 years. We never did work like that. They said they will come back with the saltwater, they'll just come back basically. So either we do this job or just have the citizens, uh, commit a
Go on, decide over. All right.
Can you say refresh my, now we have a procedure for a formal bid. Does it, does it have to be published? Is there a timeline? How does that work?
The timeline is established by us and we usually look at three, five places.
Yes, the, the timeline is usually, it's going to be over a month, depending on the size of the project. Usually a little longer if it's better. But a lot of my projects, we try to do as quickly as possible. But four to six weeks if we can, just to move things along. But yeah, there's a, you know, there is a time period you have to give. You're going to give it a reasonable amount or you're not going to be able to get bids in for it.
So if we issue a request for bids and we give them a four week, 30 day timeline, then when they do it that way, if they go back to leave, then we are, we have time before, not the next coming board meeting, but another one to look at it and be able to potentially take some action. In the meantime, you're reviewing the budget and we can have input from our council. There can't be that many people that do this, right?
Problem is, is it takes, it takes months and months to get the parts in. It can't just buy them off.
I understand that. That's why I was saying, we're talking about next, being prepared for next year.
Right. Currently, we have a motion on the floor to authorize the city manager to put this job out for bid. One option that I gave was to make a motion to amend. That motion changes to request for estimate for bidding, I mean, for a budgeting purposes. That's where we stand right now.
Going on for maybe one other, I really don't know what their reality is. But if we put it out as a bid, if we put it in a bid that we're still working to finalize the budget for it, or if that's just going to be like a sign to them to just don't even bother. I don't, I'm just asking. I mean, at least we're upfront with them that, you know, we're trying and we, we give them some likelihood that we think we're going to get through a budgeting process. But I don't know. Just throwing the table is another option to just be upfront with them so we're not destroying the contractors.
There's probably a way to gracefully raise that.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, yeah, help me with the words on it. But yeah, that's my point is just being upfront with them, being transparent with this, with, with the contractor and then that.
I think your money and water
Okay. All right.
Then should I propose amending the, amending this vote on it to take it to, let's authorize the city manager to contact individual companies about the estimates to for a junior project?
Okay.
Is it for the city manager to do that or
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
The maker of the motion would have to make, make that amendment. It can't be made for the floor.
So it has to come?
It has to be resolved motion and make the original motion to, about the motion to reflect correct the suggestion. The maker of motion wasn't what we did. The maker of motion could also withdraw the motion.
I'm not withdrawing, I'm not, I want this project to go forward. Let's vote, I want to put, put people's names and votes to the task. It's not money and waters, let's just do it.
I'm with you and I would also say that I don't want to pay for this twice. So if we're paying Gemini to actually assist us with, for our bid process, let's put the money there because the same amount of effort is going to go into an estimate. And then if we pay twice, because we've already admitted for payment for the bid process. So the word vote is largely needed by that.
Are we under obligation to award the bid if we receive three bids? The answer is no. All right, so I'm willing to vote to move forward with this bidding process, knowing that we do not have the budget for it. And it means that the project will not move forward until we establish a budget for it. I will also remind everyone that at no time have we discussed assessing the people that are impacted, that benefit from this particular project. So that's something that while we're at a work session, I would entertain because currently we don't have the money on this project. It might actually get the following faster. It might make everyone a little happier once they see the fruits of their, their own labors. So with that being said, if there are no other comments, one, one, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that I know we've talked about saltwater coming in and causing problems to the streets and the yards, which is definitely happening. My comment is, or my statement is that we clarified this in the workshop that assuming, and I think it's going to happen relatively soon, all of the check valves that are installed on those outfall pipes that are currently allowing saltwater to backflow onto the streets, once those are reinstalled and operating properly, we talked about that and it was occurred that we would not be having any more saltwater coming onto the streets and the yards unless we had a tie that actually greased the seawall. The pump system is specifically for fresh water. That once we have a scenario where we have a high tide where the water can't get out of the streets and concurrently we have rain, a significant rain, there'll be water on the streets and potentially higher. And that's what the pump system is there to take care of. So it's not, it's not a saltwater issue once the check valves are operating properly and installed.
Well, I'll add to that, it, it does actually come out saltwater whenever you have a seawall breach. But it's just occasionally that does happen, it could happen.
Just a question, Mr. Mag, what do we pay much for what our mortgage right now? It's about rated 10. We're just building.
Oh, it, we have one more payment. So how much is that?
I, I think it's 40.
Four thousand, eight thousand, I can't.
3,000 or what?
It's, it's six month payment, so by any moment.
There's a big chunk in the pump right there.
Do you say the 2,000 and for a six month period?
Yes.
So two big years, that's the answer.
But that's why we had a bond issuance and we, that money started to mark. So I don't want to get into budget issues, but that's So, I don't want to get into budget issues, but that's already earmarked.
My, my final question.
Please.
I'm going to do it by a protocol.
Do we get comments from the citizens on this? Do we get some comment on this?
We already did.
Oh, thank you.
Kathy?
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
No.
Councilmember Anders Willings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
No.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Yes. All right, so, Mr. Reefer, you were authorized to, to put this job out for bid, and we'll see what happens. All right, now we move on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? All right, well, let's move on to council comments then. Let's start with Councilmember Banker. Thank you, Mr. Banker. Basically, I had an hour and a half to talk to private people from Albee, Florida. It was supposed to give me a lot of information why today, but I got it at 5:15 tonight. I'm going to share with you, Mr. Ray, from our email, I really haven't had time to do that. And I want to bring up a comment, Lloyd, you made a comment, the mayor, about mosquitoes. I'm getting complaints all over, from my wife, yeah. A couple of years ago, I did call the county, they said, we had a big wind on the one island, blew a lot of them in here, and I didn't know this, but the county would come out and spray the area. And they said, you have, the, the county has to be bid three times, like a five-minute period. So, he rang my door at 7 o'clock, I was making coffee, I opened the door, he says, I just got bid five times. So, they sprayed the area for free, and they got rid of all the skeet, so I think, I don't know, you know the number of gang, or...
Yes.
Can you, yeah?
If you just tell me the areas, they're one of those specific areas that people are getting dead, but who can report?
Keller Beach.
Oh, okay.
We're only too mild, it can't be that hard. I reported from like 9th Street downtown to First Street, like, and, I don't, I can't really... First Street did cause me off, I tell you, I mean, just being sort of the...
I don't know the area, if you want to try...
How to try and, please do.
I think at sunset, it's going to entirely come down.
Yeah, I'm doing that. Might as well add 22nd and Denard. That's it. All right, thank you, Mr. Banker. Ms. Elliott?
Thank you to the council for getting some progress on this project.
Mr. Harper? I just wanted to thank the city manager and the staff, just the work that they do, the idea of the banners on the poles, and the banner over the causeway, and just planning and the follow-through has been exceptional, so I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Shirley?
Nothing greater.
Councilmember Willing?
Yeah, I echo that, it's been really, been great working with Kyle and his staff, really helpful through a lot of this pump discussion stuff, and I appreciate all the effort he puts into this work, he does a lot for our community. Maybe a second, another point, I have heard, regarding the, you know, I wonder when we're going to bring back the discussion on the fire station leasing topic, does that know be another work session topic, maybe? I have heard from multiple residents, two residents, they love and support the local fire department, but they've been very clear, they do not support any potential plan to lease this property to the, to the fire department as a temporary site.
Okay.
That's it.
So, we currently have been on to repair, the house that includes some repairs if they were to use it.
Right.
That is scheduled to be, the due date is Wednesday next week? And I might push that back another week?
Okay.
Because I want to work on some details for the finishing schedules.
Okay.
I mean, it's not going to be much, but just enough to be courage bidding. But then, the intention is before, once we have those numbers, you know, for any planning to move forward, anything, we want to arrange a discussion with the public, like, of this idea and your model, so that all those concerns can be brought forward.
I also heard, sorry to extend a little bit, but I also, someone, one of the residents mentioned that the neighboring property that's banned, that's just, it's been torn down, the neighboring to 1,001, that's here, is maybe being considered to be purchased by the fire department?
No. The, the fire department is inquired.
Okay.
There's not a real, there's no real traction on that.
You can ask, but you may not proceed. But why do you want on it?
Okay, thank you.
That is not...
I think the residents would be pleased to hear that.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Vice Mayor Roberts?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the putting the flags out for the holidays, that deserve the flags being put out. I know Kathy and her staff worked on it a lot, some of the members from the Parks and Rec Department. So, it's, it's, it always gets a very, very good response. And normally, the times that I've been putting the flags out, it's, sometimes it's later in the night, but anybody that sees anybody putting the flags out always has a very pleasant comment, and thanking us for doing that. So, I hope the city continues to do that for many, many, many years to come.
Thank you. All right, I know that there's many people, I think there's many people here that have concerns about the potential of a fire hall, or housing, fireman, EMS staff, things like that. What I'd like to do is, is not necessarily have a debate over whether it's going to happen or not, what I wanted to do is assure each and every one of you that what we wanted to do was provide a conduit for the fire chief to have some new staff while they're building the new fire hall that's going to be just south of the 1st Street and Indian Rock Beach line. The proposal was not to put a fire truck on the street, it wasn't anything like that. The proposal was to just keep a fire truck out here in our parking lot, ready to go in the event that there was an issue, maybe an ambulance or an EMS vehicle. But it wasn't supposed to turn into this giant, okay, this is what we're doing, and we're going to make a lot of noise, it was more of a, they asked for help, and we said, well, listen, but what I did tell him, and everyone here can back me up on this, is I told the fire chief that we would not allow it to happen without having a town hall meeting, and letting everyone that would be impacted by having a fire truck in our parking lot attend, and, and we'd hear their voices, and then we would make a decision based upon your input, not his input. So, I want you to know that we're thinking about you and your neighborhood before we think about adding a fire truck to the parking lot, okay? Just wanted to, to bring that to light. Other than that, as soon as we have a date for that town hall meeting, we'll send out invitations, and we'll make sure it's, it's noted on the board out here, and we'll let everybody come and speak their, their mind, all right? That's all I have for now. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Jody Shirley, all in favor?
I, I...
I keep hearing a few people, it's more than...
Totally same.